For February 4th, 2014, and with that we'll ask for a call.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Burbank.
Here.
Rainey.
Here.
Spende. Trilson.
Here.
Dodson.
Here.
Abraham.
Here.
Mayor Koontz.
Here.
We have six of the council and the mayor present.
Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here, and we do have one addition to the agenda that was sent to us, a pre-session legislative update. With that, we'll look for a motion to approve as with the correction.
So moved.
Motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Nate Dodson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And with that, because that's the next item on the agenda, we'll ask Vicki to come and join us at the podium.
Thank you. I have a handout for you.
Thank you, Vicki.
It's great to be here. I think it's really important for me as a legislator to maintain that contact and have a good conversation about us being the partners that we should be. The preview for this session is that it's a short session. We don't start until the 25th of February. The two things that I think we need to be watching for and waiting to hear about, of course, is the new forecast that comes out in February. I think that'll make a big difference on what policy we'll hear and take a look at during the session. And the other thing is the committee deadlines, both in the House and the Senate. If the deadlines are real quick, we'll also be real pressed for time to get a lot of policy changes done this particular session. What we will do for sure is look at some bonding proposals. The governor came out with his proposal, and I'm ecstatic to say that there were some projects that I had sponsored that are on his recommendations. One of them was the State Academy in Fairbowl to get a boys dormitory on that campus. And another one is the first one on the list that I handed out to you. What this list is, is all of the legislation that I'm authoring and carrying this next session. Like I said, it all depend if I'll be able to do most of this depending on what the forecast looks like and what our deadlines are. But the first one is I'm proposing a $25 million appropriation through the bonding process into the Business Development Public Infrastructure Grant Program, and that's strictly for greater Minnesota. And it's been there for a while, but I want to make a few changes. And one of them is that you can use a matched, this matched grant. So it used to be a million dollars, and then you'd have to match it with a million. I want to up that to two because just because of the cost of the projects. And the other thing is it was always for new construction or new infrastructure. I want it to be for replacing or maintaining some of the infrastructure that you have. The whole idea is to be able to attract economic development to our towns in greater Minnesota. And in order to do that, we need the public infrastructure in place in order to do that. And retention, as we know, is one of the big factors, not just guaranteeing new jobs, but making sure that we retain the ones that are already here and doing really well. That one did make it in the governor's bonding proposal as well, but he has $5 million. So we're a little far apart on that, but I will continue to fight for that and try to up that if possible. One of the other big bills that I'll be carrying that I hope I'll be able to do depending on how much we see in the forecast is the repeal of the business-to-business taxes. I didn't vote for those last session. I know there's a bipartisan support for the repeal of those, and I'm hoping that we can get that done. Again, that depends on the forecast we see. Some of the things in the education area, last year we passed a location equity levy availability to school districts. The seven county metro area, I think it was about $400 a student. If you had over 2,000 students, you would get up 200 and some per student, which left the districts in the state with less than 2,000 average daily membership not having that access to that funds, to those funds. To make it worse, a couple years ago they passed a sparsity levy, which was for schools with 1,000 and less students. So there's a group of districts, about 70 in the state, that don't get the location equity, and they don't get the sparsity. So I'm carrying legislation hopefully to be able to remove that 2,000 limit and allow the districts across the state to be able to have access to those funds. I thought it was really revealing when they, it's an opt-out, and only two districts that qualified for that opted out. So we know this is a needed fund. So hopefully we get to have that go through as well. Then the one that I would really like to talk to you about a little bit, transportation funding. I'm here to ask a little bit about the I-35 project that's proposed to start in 2014. I hope, I hope we can work together, the city, the county, and I know the chamber has been working very diligently, trying to make sure that we're prepared and understand the impact to our businesses, to people that work. Because the two bridges that they're taking out is how we get people from here over into the industrial park area. And if those are closed down and we don't know for sure exactly how we're going to get people back and forth and how that works, I'm concerned that we'll run into some trouble with that. So my ask of the department is that we could hold some meetings here in Owatonna with some really good information about what people can expect when this project starts. I think that will help us be able to get through it because they're planning a two-year timeframe, which would impact us then for two summers for sure, which hopefully we could get that shortened. But because they're starting in 2014 already, we need to be on top of that. And so I'm asking for your support and your help when that comes about, that we kind of have meetings held jointly so that we can know that we're prepared and people understand what will be happening. There probably will be some ask if we have some funds available through the forecasting process, if they do a supplemental, some transportation funding. What I've been working on throughout the interim is making sure that we not only come out and ask taxpayers to pay some more for our transportation, roads, bridges, transit needs, that we also get some reform within the department itself. Southeastern Minnesota has a 30% increase of cost over every other district. We need to know why and what we can do to help that. Maybe that'll help us get some of these projects done. We also have a lot of projects that get one bid. Unacceptable. We have to dig into that a little bit and figure out why are we only getting one bid where across the state they get more. So things like that will have to be part of this multimodal transportation package. We passed it out of the Senate last session. They're going to have to, we're going to have to pass it again, but I want to make sure that we have some of those. So if you have any ideas about that, please let me know. And then there are some other things that I'm working on, but last year we did reduce the amount of sales tax that cities were asked to pay. But what I'm hearing is it's been a little bit complicated with the implementation. So as I go out now and I'm talking with cities in my district, I would really like to hear from you how that's working, what problems you see, what, if you need some help from me, I'm available to do that and very willing to help try to figure out how we're going to get through the implementation of that. My understanding when I voted was, or we had the conversations, was that you wouldn't have any tax. So it was a surprise to me to find out that there are differences and actually you still do have to pay some. So the other thing is I've been hearing from cities that although the property tax was relieved in most areas, that you're being also asked to take on some extra things that you were not asked to take on. So if there are issues like that, I would really like to hear those specific examples so that I can try to work on that and figure out what's happening there. So if you have any of those examples, please share them with me. There was some leftover business last session that we will take up. One of them was a Safe and Supportive School Act. You probably know it as the bullying bill. That passed out of the House, not out of the Senate, so the Senate has to take that up. There was some concern with the constitutionality of our sex offender program. We passed something out of the Senate. It was not passed out of the House, so the House has that to work on. And then we have the minimum wage bill that's sitting right now in conference committee. It passed out of both the House and the Senate. The Senate was at a different price than the House, so they have to work that out. So I would imagine because it passed out of both the House and the Senate, we'll see a minimum wage increase. It'll just depend on how high, what kind of agreement they can come to. Yes?
What's the difference in the House and Senate on that bill?
The House is at 950, and I believe the Senate was at 775 when it passed. So that's where they're sitting at right now.
Okay.
That's the difference. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Since the feds are doing, looking at that old bill and federal bill and stuff on minimum wage, I was wondering if you were...
But the difference there is that's for federal employees only.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
It's not for the general public.
Yeah, I understand. But the state looked at it last year.
Right. And there was even some consideration and conversation about should we just follow, put into ours, follow whatever the federal comes up with. I don't think that's in either of the bills right now, but there was some conversation about, do we really want to take a look at this every 10 years versus, you know, taking it a little bit of a time, a little bit at a time? But it's not there currently.
Any other questions? Kevin?
The armory out here, the federal government has come up with the money, and we're waiting on the state yet.
We're waiting on the state. Well, the recommendation was in the governor's proposal to do what needs to happen out here at the armory. That's always a really good sign.
But what happens if that doesn't happen?
You know, I don't know that process, what would happen, but I know we need to make sure that we get it in the final proposal.
The reason why I'm asking is because at this point, the armory's going to be closed from May 1st to May 1st.
For construction?
For remodeling, construction.
For remodeling, yeah.
And they're anticipating having the money from both the federal and the state to get it done.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we'll do what we can to get it in the final bill. But it was very, very good to see it in the governor's proposal. It's something we have to do, and it's a really good example of things that come down from the federal, down to the local and to the state that then we have to try to figure out. And one of the big things is there's just not enough room for storage and the artillery that we need to have for training. And the other thing is the girls locker room. There isn't one. So when they made those changes, we're going to have to change all the armories that don't have that availability. So I have a pretty good feeling that this will be one that we'll be able to get in just because we have to be able to do those things to meet that federal standard.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, with that, thank you very much, Vicki, and look forward to an update probably or hopefully during the session.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep. And contact me. My information, contact information is on the sheet. If you have any concerns that I talked about, please let me know.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can be on highway four, can you allow?
With that, we'll move on to the financial report, and I've asked Greg to read the financial statement for us.
Okay, here's a recap. Checks over 20,000. $24,500 to advance resources. It's consulting for TIF 3-6, which will be reimbursed by the developer. $21,505 to Inventus, the annual hardware, software support for the phone system. $59,021 to St. Croix Recreation for the Manthe Park play equipment. $23,168 to Yocum Oil for fuel purchases, and $165,612 of other expenditures for a subtotal of $293,807. Added to that is the November 1 Section 8 payments of $61,863 for a total of $355,670.
Thank you. Any questions? Raymond?
Chris, just a question on Manthe Park. I know we had 100,000 scheduled. What are we going to do with the other 50?
I think they were going to use that for landscaping and, you know...
But it is still going to be used for Manthe Park.
Yes.
So the equipment was 50,000 out of 100,000?
Yeah, they were able to get like a demonstration model and then make some modifications so that it would work at Manthe. So, yeah, they got a great deal on it. And I think the rest is going to go for the landscaping and the, you know, the playground material around the...
Because originally they were talking 100,000 just for equipment, weren't they?
Yep.
And did that include installation by the, by them, or is that city installation on that?
You know, I'd have to check into that. I'm not sure.
Any further questions from the council? What is the council's wishes?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
We have a motion to pay the bills. We have a second. Motion by Kevin. Second by Nate. Any further discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items, which are dance permits, minutes of meetings, et cetera, request event permits, all grouped into one motion for ease of voting, so.
So moved we approve.
We have a motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion on any items? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. We'll move on to the action items at this point. And with that, we will move down to 3.7.1 Authorization to Proceed with Sidewalks on Bridge Street, and this will go to Kyle.
Good evening. Looking for a council motion to proceed with advertisement for bids for the Bridge Street sidewalk project. If you'll recall, last summer we put this project out for bids. The bids came in considerably higher than expected, so we rejected all the bids, and we're going to bring it back for reconsideration this year. The estimated cost is $95,000, and we'd be using our MSAS or our state aid dollars to pay for it. And we recommend approval.
Thank you, Kyle. Any questions from the council?
So moved we approve.
Motion by Raymond to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Greg Schultz. Any further discussion? Kevin?
Kyle, just curious, what did the bids come in last year?
About 95,000.
Okay, thank you.
We hope to get, because of the better bidding climate in the spring, we hope to get better prices, but concrete has been going up quite rapidly.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. Next item on the agenda is 3.7.2 League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. And with that, I see Rhonda is here, so.
Yes.
I'll turn it over to Rhonda.
Hello. The city's in the process of their annual renewal for their property and liability insurance. As part of that process, we need to make a decision whether or not to waive the statutory tort limits. And it is in the best interest of the city not to waive the statutory tort liability limits. This is an annual resolution which we have been approving, and that's the same as what we've done in previous years. Recommendation would be for council to approve not waiving the limits.
I'm sorry, say that again?
The recommendation is for council to approve not waiving the limits.
Thank you. Questions from the council?
Motion we approve.
Motion by Nate Dodson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dave Burbank. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This has been approved. The next item on the agenda is 3.7.3 Event Permit for Wedding Reception at the Airport. And with this, I'm going to recuse myself because of a potential conflict of interest, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Greg.
Thank you, Les. Here again, we're at 3.7.3 Event Permit, and we'll go to Troy for this.
Well, this is the first request we've had for a wedding reception at the airport, which is why it's a separate item on the agenda. Jason Kubicek and Vanessa Roman are requesting to have their wedding reception at the airport in one of the city's hangars on May 17th. Jason is a pilot. A number of attendees at the wedding are also pilots, and so that is why they are requesting to have that venue for their wedding reception at the airport. They're estimating the attendance to be about 300 guests. The city departments have reviewed this and have approved it. The police department has met with the wedding couple, and they have signed a liquor license agreement. There would be alcohol served. And the agreement outlines exactly what would need to happen at the event. There would be two uniformed police reserve officers that would be at the event. The fire department did require some new hardware on the exit doors of the hangar, and that was not originally on those doors when the hangar was built. It is something that we do need. The airport does have public pancake breakfast out there annually for the fly-in, so it is an improvement that we do need to have out there. So it will serve airport purposes as well. And then the street department had some concerns about parking. We do have 80 parking stalls striped currently, hard-surfaced. You can get about 120 parking, vehicles parked on hard-surfacing. And if there's a need beyond that, I think what we would do is we would just communicate with the wedding party as to, you know, some areas for overflow parking, and that'll depend on if we have, you know, wet grounds or not. We'll kind of put them where it wouldn't cause any damage to the turf out there. The airport commission did meet on this a couple different times. They do not want to be in the wedding reception business. They don't want to compete against other businesses that do do this. This is a special request. There is ties to the airport with pilots and providing some exposure to pilots to our airport, which is part of what the airport is trying to do for marketing. So they did see some tie-ins with the airport. They did recommend approval of the special event out at the airport. What they agreed upon was a $1,000 charge to rent the facility and to reimburse the city on costs that will be incurred, and then also requiring a $500 deposit, which would be held to make sure everything is brought back the way it was prior to the event. And they felt that that was a fair compensation for this event. So they did recommend approval of the special use permit, and staff would recommend approval as well.
Thank you, Troy. What are the council's wishes on this? Or Raymond?
Just have a couple of comments. I got a few calls from lodges in town, and, you know, I think it's a great idea, and I, you know, I just hope we're not opening the barn door someday. Somebody, we got a lot of pilots, and they might want to, their child's graduation, you know, and this could never, I just get concerned we're competing against organizations that pay taxes and stuff. You know, I'm just concerned about that. And I see by the airport minutes, they're going to go ahead and spend the 3,000 for the hardware. I see there was a, their minutes, it was 3,000. That's great. We need to update that. Or, you know, I just, boy, I tell you, once you allow it to happen, it could happen again and again and again. I just have a concern about that.
And I sympathize with that. We don't want to make this a regular thing. I could see possibly the airport commission making it part of maybe the airport's policy that this option is available to licensed pilots, people that have a vested interest in the airport, you know, have some sort of a reason for it being a special occasion for pilots specifically. Because, yeah, we don't want, we don't want the airport to become the banquet hall. That's something the airport commission would be interested in considering.
Kevin?
I guess I agree. I don't want to see that become a banquet facility. My concern is even if we make the stipulation pilots, that type of thing, where do we draw the line? Graduation parties, birthday parties, reunions, class reunions? You're getting, how far do you want to expand that? That's my concern. The other concern that I've got, and I did talk with Chief Hiller this afternoon, the police reserve that's going to be out there, their duties do not include carding people. One of my concerns was, first of all, have they been trained in this area? And not as comfortable as I'd like to see. The other issue is, part of their duty is not to look to see who is drinking alcohol and make a determination, do I need to card them at this point, see if they're of age or not? I believe, I don't know for sure, but special deputies, I know that when, I've used them in the past, they have checked IDs and that type of thing. So just from the family, just curious, are you using any security other than the reserve officers?
Why don't you go up to the microphone?
Come up to the mic, please.
Please come to the microphone.
And congratulations, by the way.
State your name for us and...
Hi, I'm Vanessa Roman. If you're asking about what we would do for like the alcoholists to make sure that people are getting carded, we are hoping to have El Tequila, and they agreed to it too, and they took it very seriously too, because they, you know, it's their license. They said that they would absolutely be carding everybody and making sure that, you know, that they're not in any harm or trouble either, so.
And he's very concerned about his reputation. He said he didn't want...
Right. And the issue isn't at the point of sale for me. The issue is when it's taken back to a table, and you've got a group of 21, 22-year-olds all sit combing with 18, 19, 20-year-olds, and that's where the alcohol drinking takes place.
If it would be something that we could do, we could even provide wristbands just to make sure that, you know, everybody who is 21, you know, that we, you could visibly see that they are, you know, not the wrong person is touching that alcohol.
And Captain Jeff that we spoke with, he said that the officers would be, have a radio instead of, you know, he said that's added security than we would have like a rent-a-cop at like an armory or somewhere else where they don't have, they have to use his phone, but they've got immediate access to guys on the street. So if anything were to break out, he said that it's a little bit more tight secured than you would at some other event.
And he's also said that they would provide at least two. So I don't know if that would mean more or two for sure, and...
Yeah, I'd know to say two.
But realistically, Kevin, if, say, a CSO or a reserve officer suspected there was underage drinking, at that point they would have the ability to call in other officers to ensure compliance. So I'm not too terribly concerned about that. If El Tequila is willing to, you know, check IDs and...
And they are, have their liquor license and everything too, so.
Okay, thank you.
What were you, excuse me, Greg, what were you planning on doing for the overflow parking? They said they have 80 spots. Were you planning on, what's your objective there? Where are you going to park out in front of the hangar?
We have a lot of guests coming from out of town, and we're going to block a lot of hotel rooms. So the hotel van will be dropping off a lot of people.
Commute.
I don't know if we will even use all 80 spaces, but if we do, Dave Beaver said that he even has some kind of material that they can lay down.
Barricades.
Barricades too, to make sure that they're in safe spots, so to protect the grass if it's wet.
Yeah, I know. I know he said he had some kind of a protection too for the grass too, so that it wouldn't...
I wasn't too concerned about that because of the pancake breakfast. They're all parked on, they cover the whole lawn. I don't know, I wasn't, I didn't get too upset about that. Where you need to park on the lawn, it's not a big deal to me.
And I mean, if it got so terribly huge, I don't know if the airport can block off a space on the ramp. I don't know. But I don't, I don't think that the parking would be the issue. What's the main concern with the parking? Is it, would it be tearing up the grass? Yeah.
No, I wasn't concerned about the ground. If they park the whole place full with the pancake breakfast, so.
Just curious, liability, are you carrying some type of liability insurance for this event?
If that's something that you guys would like us to have, we would be more than happy to provide that.
Yeah.
Did the airport commission have any input on that? Any concerns?
They did not.
Do we require that, say, for the fly-in breakfast? Do they carry a liability policy for that event?
I would have to check on that. I'm not sure.
If we could find out about that, if they have something, maybe we would ask for something similar. That'd be acceptable.
Civil Air Patrol sponsors that. I don't know if they do, but, you know, they would be the agency.
Hundred bucks.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There, what are the council's wishes? Is there a motion to be made?
I'd make a motion that we approve, just with the, maybe the suggestion that we consult with the airport committee about liability insurance, and if they feel that that's something that they should have, I'll move approval.
Okay, motion by Nate with a couple of conditions. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and we'll turn it back over to Les.
Thank you, Greg. Very good job. And with that, we have no other items on the agenda except for public comments, and if anyone wishes to speak on any item on the agenda, please come forward and sign in. Seeing none, we will move on to council comments, and we'll start with Greg.
Nothing this evening.
Dave?
Nothing from Ward 3?
Kevin?
I'd just like to thank Greg for the anchor, and that's it.
Thank you. Raymond?
Just exciting to see something happen at Pillsbury, and a lot of people have been involved for a long time. It's just exciting to see that our next approach, you know, on that whole property, it'd be nice, it's nice to hear that they're going to keep everything kind of intact, and it'll be nice for the city and for everybody, so...
Thank you, Raymond.
Nate?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Mayor?
Mark McGarrett asked if I'd mentioned that the Eagles this weekend is doing a cancer fundraiser, a live auction on Friday night and on Saturday, so if those are interested, to go down to the Eagles and been in live auctions for a good cause. Also, Vonda White is in town today and did the news release for Pillsbury. Very exciting times. If it all comes together, it will definitely put Oatana on a map as a destination city. So, it's very, very interesting, and we hope great success with that process.
Thank you.
I also had the privilege of being Tim Walz's guest at the State of the Union this last week, and it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I was treated very, very well out there, and it was interesting to watch the American politics at action, so I really thank Congressman for that opportunity.
Thank you, Tom. Chris?
I have a few announcements for you.
Okay.
We are having the 113th anniversary of the library, along with a grand opening of the new renovations courtesy of that Bremer grant, and that will be held on Saturday, February 22nd, from 10:00 to 11:00 in the morning.
What time, Chris?
10:00 to 11:00 in the morning, Saturday morning on the 22nd of February, and invite you all to come. There'll be a program right then. Our first 2014 coffee with the council will be held on Saturday, February 8th, that's this Saturday, 8:30 to 9:30 at the Hy-Vee Deli. Come join us and visit with the council and myself on any item that you have a concern about or a question about. It's a very informal setting, and we would urge you to just come visit with us. Just another plug for the grandparents and grandchildren ice fishing event. This is rescheduled due to some weather. It will be held on Saturday, February 15th, from 1:30 to 3:30. Drop in anytime, it's at Lake Chase. It's free for all kids and senior place members. $2 for adults who are not senior place members. So they're going to teach you how to ice fish, and there's prizes for the biggest fish and free hot chocolate, so check it out. And then finally, Mark Garrett, street superintendent, who's been with the city for, gosh, over 32 years, I think, is going to retire, and we are having an open house party for him on Thursday, February 27th, starting at 3:00 to 5:30 at Brooktree. So please join us to offer Mark best wishes as he retires, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Chris. And I think each one of you should have received the form, the performance review for Chris. We'd like to do a setup, a time when we can get together to have it ready and review Chris, so if anybody has any dates, do we want to do it? See, our next council meeting is on the 18th. Do we want to do that after the council meeting?
Today.
Sure.
Six.
It's kind of late sometimes, okay?
I don't have a problem with it. That would work fine.
I have a conflict.
It's going to snow that day.
We don't need you there for that.
Oh, okay. Just let me know how I do.
We can move it out to next January.
What's that?
We can move it out to next January.
That would be fine.
I'll defer.
Yeah, just talk to Mark. No, I have a, you know, it's senior year, and so Jake has basketball games kind of, and I'd really like to make those as much as I can, and there is one at home on the 18th, so I was hoping to catch part of that.
The fourth is our next council meeting in March, the 1st of March.
1st of March.
We'll move it out to that date.
I will be out of town on that date.
At some sections, anyway.
Okay.
If they make it that far.
25th, there would be, we would come in for that.
March 18th.
We could come in for that on the 25th.
Pardon me?
25th?
Of March?
February?
February? Let me check here.
That's a Tuesday. We do not have a council meeting that night, but...
25th is first round tournament.
First round tournaments.
Les, why don't we have Chris put out some dates and see where we...
Let's do that.
Okay. Yeah, we'll fund that.
Sounds good.
Sorry about that.
Looks like you're the one that...
I'm the problem, I'm the problem.
Coordinated.
We'll remember that.
Okay. This will be for her performance reviews, so...
We could do this at the game.
That would be fine. Halftime, halftime.
Very public performance review on the court.
With that, I have nothing else, and congratulations and good luck on, that's a very good date because that's my 45th wedding anniversary.
There you go. Nice.
I may have to do that. Congratulations, so.
Motion will be adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn by Raymond.